Thank you for finding us again. No stoplights, a little more regular than we were when we were transitioning from our old studio to our new studio. It's kind of interesting. I'll give you a bit of behind the scenes look. The furniture behind us was like we were setting up a room. We're not actually setting up a room. We're setting up a set and we'll make some corrections and adjustments as we move forward. We've actually got some other things in store. We're not ready to disclose yet because we hadn't got them paid for yet. Got to get them paid for before we tell our viewers and listeners what our overall intent is. But I want to begin, as I always do, by thanking our sponsors. Victor's Florence Marlboro, Pitty Electric Co-op, Francis Marion University, Carolina Bank, Pepsi Florence, Mickey Fens, McCall Farms, PLC Commercial Real Estate, Florence County Legislative Delegation. We're going to get real creative in making sure our sponsors are recognized more than just at the beginning and the end of our podcast. We've got some visuals, some optics and some other things that we are, we are working on. We're work in progress. We've been a work in progress for a long time. But these sponsors genuinely support this feeble attempt at podcasting. We certainly appreciate all they've done to help us get to where we are and hopefully to where we hope to be. We did a podcast recently with Roger Kirby and I began a lot of our sentences with Roger's Democrat, I'm a Republican. We see the world fundamentally different. So you always set it up in a certain way. I want to give a setup for this next podcast. No crying allowed. I'm not going to cry. I mean, I try to proclaim myself one of these tougher than nails, harder than edge, country boys who nothing upsets or nothing gets to, but I've got three kids. And, um, and my next guest has a very interesting and compelling story that I think is going to have a classic ending. And by that, I mean, there's going to be a lot of success and a lot of living left for this next guest of ours. We did one of our early podcasts when we were living out of a suitcase over Francis Marion with someone named Jeff McKay. Jeff became the NISA Director, Northeastern Strategic Alliance when I was on county council. And that's a regional economic development organization. Jeff has done yeoman's work in leading that group. And I got to know Jeff fairly well because we dealt a bunch on economic development and council and, and politics and whatnot. And, um, and I got to know the family nowhere near as well as I knew Jeff, but I got to know one of his sons in particular through our, um, going to the gym together. I'm on the senior tour. He was on the, um, the, uh, the full of piss and vinegar tour. So, um, this has really been something I paid close attention to. And I've been well aware of, and Jeff and I have spoken many, many, many times about, you know, not, not business and not economic development, but being a dad and having something very unexpected happen in your life and how to deal with it. And, and you know, this, this guest has, I think, one of the most interesting stories. And I think God is in the middle of it. I'm not a spiritual superhero, but, but I'm a God fearing man. And I believe that God is the Alpha and the Omega, the beginning of the end. And I think that, um, that Zach McKay, our guest is, um, is still writing chapters in his life that will honor God and inspire people to be better than they are. Jeff, excuse me, Zach, how are you?
I'm doing well.
I called you Jeff already. I knew, I knew I'd do that. Um, and then you can see that, that Zach is in a different place than most of us are. I can relate guys. I don't want to make this about me. It's more about him, but I can relate because my sister was born with spinal muscular atrophy. Could find her in a wheelchair all of her life, died at the age of 29. So when, 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 when I was made aware that Zach had this predicament, it was very relatable to me because my, once again, we built our life around my sister and her wheelchair. And it was a very, as normal as you can make it. And I admire the McKay family and those who love and care about Zach to try and make it as normal as you can possibly make it. Zach, let's go back to, um, if I'm not mistaken, we're talking about college football a second ago. You and someone you adore, and I'll let you introduce her or tell us who she is. But, but the two of you are going to a South Carolina Tennessee football game. That's the, I mean, that would be the weekend that your life took a big turn that you never imagined it would take. Take us back to, to, to what happened when you realized you were in trouble and kind of how that situation evolved.
So we were, like you said, we went to the, uh, the Tennessee Carolina game at Tennessee, which again, it's not too familiar with Tennessee as a whole. And my girlfriend Lex, um, she's awesome. She's great. And especially since this happened, it's been a, bear with me, I get some spasms from time to time. Um, but so she's been great. She's a nurse. And actually started her career off at UT Medical Hospital, which ultimately ended up being a blessing nonetheless. But so we were there for actually her birthday weekend and we had gone up just to catch a game. It seemed like a good weekend to be against South Carolina. Um, and then every, for the most part, everything was great. We went and I'll never forget it. The day prior to the game, we went, uh, what's it hang glided or whatever down the, um, uh, just some of the mountains in Tennessee. And I remember saying to Lex, saying, hey, I'm going to break my neck doing this. We don't need to be here.
You verbalized that.
Yeah. Well, apparently so. And then we made it through the whole trip. Then the very next day is when everything happened. Um, and again, we, we had gotten split up, kind of going our separate way, not separate ways, but unintentionally, I guess, after the game, I had a buddy in town and had met up with him, was trying to find her, tried to take what I thought was a shortcut. Ended up falling off a retaining wall, fell about 30 feet. Knew on, and I never lost consciousness. So I knew on impact that something was wrong. When I saw my phone laying beside me and couldn't grab it, said, so okay, this, this ain't good. And then my breath was actually kind of, kind of losing breath as we went. And, uh, I could get out, hey Siri, but then I couldn't get out to call, call Lex. But you could tell it was just going downhill quick. Um, and so I kind of just sat there. That was when I started to pray and said, you know, this, it's been a great 29 year or 28 years at the time. Said, thank you, God for this. Uh, please forgive me for my sins. I think I'm going to meet you here soon. Um, and I actually laid there for about an hour, hour and a half, um, just kind of again praying, looking forward to meet the Lord, I guess, uh, which is kind of a surreal feeling. But then all of a sudden, I guess, hour, hour and a half later, Lex was able to charge her phone that had died during the game. And, uh, thank God she tracked my location because she ended up actually finding me calling 911. We got to the ER and again, going back to where she had started out her career. Thank God she knew so many people in there. Because God, they took great care of me. They were able. And again, she was able to speak with everybody there, kind of keep getting updates, send updates to mom and dad, who obviously were out of town and dad was actually on a fishing trip that I ended up cut short. But it was a, uh, just a very, uh, a sequence that I guess I never would have prepared for. I don't think anybody really can prepare for that. But it was a, uh, a blessing in disguise because it has, you know, I sense the head come a lot closer in my faith. As a family, you know, it's.
Explain that Zach, closer in my faith. I mean, your family are believers. I'm a believer. But, but, but you're right. At times it's a bit passive. You know, I need God when I need God. I want God when I want God, but I'm kind of going to do my thing. Explain you became closer to in your walk with, with, with Christ.
So we, uh, I mean, ultimately again, it all kind of, and obviously I've been a believer all my life. Family came from a pretty religious family. Um, and so we've, I've always been close to God. But again, when you're 28 years old, not.
You've got things to do, man.
Right. I mean, and it's bad to say, but absolutely. Uh, you know, it kind of, obviously was still there, but priorities are on my priority list. It wasn't number, it should be, not proud of it, but it definitely wasn't number one. And since then, um, we definitely become a lot closer. If we can't make it to church, we're watching church. I've got a, or watch it on YouTube and one of my buddies is a, uh, the associate pastor over at Blaine Methodist Church down in, uh, Merle's inlet. Um, and they actually built the ramp for us at my house. They came and that was one of their mission trips. But JT kind of is always, and again, I don't want to dispel too much of his information, but he, uh, going through, when we were in high school, he was diagnosed with lung cancer. And again, me at the high school age was when I found that out. I was actually in the middle of a baseball game, um, just lost it, started crying. And, um, at that time I thought cancer meant it was done for, um, and what he's kind of been there in my life. And then when this happened, really he came down to Shepherd Center quite a few times. We were able to talk and knowing he's been through, I mean, a journey in himself. And seeing that that was what kind of helped him find God, find his passion and ended up what I guess ultimately to help him decide to go to, uh, to seminary school. Uh, and now again, once this happened, he was the first one there, uh, was there.
Let's go back because I think this is so interesting. So you're laying in the parking lot. You fell a lot further than you ever imagined. You know that you can't move. You think you're going to die. Your girlfriend finds you. They put you in an ambulance. They carry you to a, to a medical facility. Did, did you ever after that think you were going to die? I mean, obviously you know there's big issues. You know that something is terribly wrong, but, but once you got to a place that could care for you, did you take dying off the table?
So no, not necessarily. The, uh, I think once I got there, once I woke up and again, I was, they had me pretty juiced up on it, all sorts of pain medicine and whatnot. Um, so I don't think I necessarily understood everything that was going on. At the time, but then when they came in and started talking about the surgery and how they were going to have to go in, it was going to be six to eight hour operation. They were hoping that they could do it all from the front.
What are they trying to do? What, what, what specifically is wrong with you that has you confined to a wheelchair?
So whenever I fell, I shattered my, my C5 vertebrae, uh, which when they showed the picture, it was basically non-existent. Looked like, it looked like Tannerite had blown up in it. Um, and so it was gone. And so the surgery was to remove the fragments of that spine that were, or of the vertebrae that was, um, that had shot into the spinal cord and then caused the, uh, spinal cord to, I guess shrink is probably the best way to put it. And so the surgery was to go in, take out the bone, the bone fragments. Um, and hopefully let that cord kind of heal itself, uh, which ultimately now is why I'm, while I'm in the chair. It's, they say it can take up to 18 months for the scar tissue. So again, that's, uh, for the scar tissue to kind of heal itself. Now the nerves can't regenerate. Um, but that is ultimately what, and each, the further down you go with each spine or with each vertebrae, kind of dictates where you can and can't move. But I mean, even right after that surgery, when I was still at UT, um, they actually told me that basically said, look Zach, you'll never get used to what you're at. Uh, and again, that was fresh out of the surgeries. I didn't have, I could shrug my shoulders and that was about it. Um, and he said, Zach, and I'm, I probably, the, the PA that I dealt with probably hated me because every morning, again, I think I was on enough pain medicine, but I'd say stop. And I can see it plain as day, but I'd say, doctor, shoot it to me straight. Am I going to walk again? And then probably 15 minutes later, asking the exact same question. Um, but he said, look, son, you're, he said, any, he said, obviously miracles can happen, but he said, I basically prepared a, you're going to have your, you can move your neck probably, but other than that, nothing. Um, and so that kind of, it's a tough pill to swallow whenever they tell you that, obviously. 28 years of my life, I spent playing sports, being pretty active, always outside. And then hearing that it's, I mean, it's a wake up call. Um, but then again, at first, obviously you don't, you take it and you just kind of, oh, to hell with this. I mean, the world's out to get me. Uh, and I'd be lying if I didn't say that there's still times where, where you do think like that. But, uh, ultimately then it gives you also motivation. I mean, you've seen so many stories where people have been told, oh, you're not going to move. Oh, you're not going to do it. And then they end up, are walking again. And so we took that and, you know, used it again as motivation. Was able to use that at Shepherd Center. And again, I haven't gained back a ton, but I mean, I can now move my left hand, which has come along.
The, the Shepherd Center specializes in people that have, um, ended up in your condition, correct? I mean, UT would be a world-class medical facility, but they don't specialize in, in spinal trauma and nerve damage and paralysis and all these other sorts of things.
Right, right. And that's, uh, Shepherd Center is, I mean, awesome. They've got cutting edge technology, able to kind of, again, and even with the technology, even with everything that you get to work on. And again, it's like you said, just, I mean, very far advanced, more than just a regular hospital would have, um, from a rehabilitation standpoint. But also they, they, um, it's nice to be able to see other folks that are innocent. I mean, and again, it's, I don't want to say nice, but it makes it easier working with folks all every day that are kind of in that same position as you getting to see them getting, again, and it's getting people to talk to from a mental standpoint, to kind of see where they're at, where, what happened, kind of how long they've, or how long they've been working on it, how much they've progressed as well. And so that, that was an awesome thing. But then from a standpoint of what all they teach at Shepherd, I mean, again, this is a world that we never, never envisioned. My family never envisioned. And again, Lex was great. She's a nurse. She understood a lot of it, but she'll even tell you that what we learned there was just, I mean, bar none. It's, if we had not gone there, I could, I could tell you, I would not be where I'm at today. It's definitely helped out for me.
I'm not doing this to be provocative, but I think it's part of your story. I know your dad. I've gotten to know your mom a little bit, having visited with you a couple of times. He always wants to talk politics. We go and we talk football and, and politics. When, when, when you weren't amped up on, on pain medicine and you and your mom and dad sit down. You remember that first time that, that you weren't out of it, so to speak, and you, your mom and dad contemplated and accepted kind of, here's where we are. Now what do we do?
So yeah, and that would, again, that probably was at Shepherd. I think, uh, while I was still at UT, they were ready to kill me. Whether I could walk or not, they, uh, I was so anxious, ready to get out of there. It was sitting around a lot, just kind of, again, couldn't move, but just stuck in that, in that hospital climate where you don't get to go see outside. You don't, and that does its own damage. Uh, but whenever we finally got to Shepherd, we were sitting there. And I'll never forget talking with dad and dad, again, I mean, and I appreciate dad like no one. Cause he was one of the few that at the beginning, he, uh, I'm sorry. But, um, from day one, he kind of kept talking the same way that we've always grown up. He's, uh, just act like nothing different. And I'm sorry.
Nothing to be sorry of.
But that, that was the one thing that, that really made it a lot easier is, and I've got friends that have done the same thing since I've been home. I mean, the, but him kind of just, again, I'm sitting there not laying down and, and he throws a ball at me. He does something fun. He's like, well, you're going to have to learn to catch somehow. I mean, and again, people probably hear that and think, oh, what a.
Zach, people think this is hokey. Your dad and I worked out a bit together, uh, years and years ago. The, the competitive spirit is not to be underestimated. I mean, when life throws you a big old, I mean, as a baseball player, you know what a curve ball is, but it's hard to hit. You'd rather see a fastball in the middle of the plate, but, but life throws all of us a curve ball. And I believe that those of us who aren't afraid to compete, and I know you're not, and I know your dad isn't. I think you find a way to create these goals and ambitions and there's always something, maybe you can't run a four, seven, 40 anymore. But there are a lot of other things you can do. Is that kind of what your dad?
Yes.
Kind of stuck to.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, that's probably, I mean, he's been like that all my life. That's probably why I was able to, again, go play baseball and, uh, be relatively successful, um, in the baseball world. And again, there's that, having that competition aspect. It's, he's instilled that in me for sure. Uh, but that has helped. I mean, it's giving yourself goals, waking up. You know, if I wake up in the morning and don't have anything to do, it's easy to, especially in my situation, just roll over and say, you know, I'm just going to stay in bed today. I'm not going to get on the couch, watch TV today. But then again, having that motivation, setting, setting goals, it allows you to get up, say, okay, well, you know, now I've got to do this. I've got to knock this out. And so that's where, uh, again, he, and with dad being the kind of workout, he obviously works out more than I do now, but, uh, back in the day, that was kind of the thing, man. It would argue over who was going to lift more, who was going to do what. Well, now he comes over to the house and we'll go outside and do workouts. Obviously it's different now than it was. But again, and I've got to give him credit. He, he's no physical therapist, no occupational therapist, but he comes up with these off the wall workouts that I'll go in and talk with my PT, talk with OT and say, yeah, we're trying this. Is this going to work? And they say, yeah, well, we haven't gotten to that yet, but that is something we're going to try to do. And so I'll give him credit and never will to his face, but he, uh, he's been a big help in that way. Just kind of, again, motivate me to get up and work.
And mama?
And mom's same way. Again, and I feel bad for them at times just because of how dependent upon them I am. Because I know, especially for mom and mom's kindergarten teacher. So she works from about eight to 12. And then right after where she has to come over and kind of relieve Lex, who is also stressed to them. I mean, again, everybody's, it's a all hands on deck thing. Just because again, I'm, I'm obviously depending up on them on certain things. And, uh, and we've kind of figured out the cycle now. I feel like Lex had to get integrated into the family probably quicker. And then she technically would have, uh, had this not happened. But again, it's been a blessing because we are, I am spending a heck of a lot more time with family than, than I was. I've got a less time, but, uh, and again, I feel bad. It's a, I don't want to say a burden because I know that they would never say it, but it is almost a burden on them to have to kind of keep doing it over all the time.
So, so let's stay there. So, um, I mean, I'm not in a wheelchair and I have days that I'm mad and sad. What do you do when, ah, when, when you go down that, I mean, it would be impossible to not think about why. You know, why did this happen to me? I mean, the answer is why not you? I mean, why would it have happened to somebody else and not? I mean, crazy things happen and we move along and do the best we can. But, but what do you do when you do have those moments or those days or those periods of time where you, I don't know, you're mad, you're sad, you yell cuss words. I mean, you know, kind of, kind of walk me through the, the process of how you deal with that.
You know, it's one of those things that kind of, and I'm very stubborn. I think if you ask anybody, they'll tell you, but to me, I kind of will sit there and just get frustrated. And again, I'll give Lex credit. She's always been able to kind of notice when it is like that. And she, she'll come over, we'll pray together. We'll, uh, try to figure out a way. And then again, just find something to get the mind off of because it, those things do creep in. And heck, I'd be lying. Here lately I've been, uh, struggling with a lot of, uh, just kind of illnesses that were, that, a lot of spinal cord related injury or spinal cord injury related stuff like UTIs and whatnot. And so I spent a lot of time or a couple of days here and there in the hospital. I had 40 bladder stones back in, uh, August that we've kind of been struggling getting in and out. And so that kind of takes its toll because you don't get to have that PT. You don't get to go to OT. Um, and again, then you're stuck closed in four walls and looking at the walls all day. And so that's when it really hits you. But again, Lex has been kind of a, a saving grace. Again, my family as well. But I've learned and just like back prior to the, uh, when I was mad, when I was frustrated going to the gym, you can kind of get that out. And now working out, getting to go to the PT, getting to do OT, stuff like that really helps from a mental standpoint. Because again, you're working out, you're kind of flushing out some of that, what, what the bad stuff in, in your system. But then also it's getting out of the house, getting out. I mean, some days when I, when it's again, like that where, oh, screw the world. You go, I'll be honest, I'll just go sit out there and outside and kind of just look up at the sun, tilt back and sit. And then again, you got dad. So every time I tilt back and this is one that dad will like, but every time I tilt the chair back and, um, dad will sit there and if he sees it, it's a three, two, one blast off. And again, it's one of those things where it's, I think it's a borderline, depending on who you said it to, might not, might take offense to it. But again, with it being dad, it's just, you almost want to, I want to get mad at him, but then it's just like, God, where's he come up with this stuff?
There.
And so oftentimes that.
Well, he's coping as you are.
Absolutely.
I mean, he's having to cope with, you know, a situation that you're having to cope with. Let me ask you this, and you can share as much of this as you'd like or not. What is your, I know you to be ambitious. I know you to be driven. I know you to be competitive. Um, but you're also a realist. What, what is, what are you hopeful for when it comes to your fiscal condition? We'll get to your, your plan in a minute about why you're here, but as it relates to your fiscal condition, what, what do you hope to accomplish?
So, and, um, my, ultimately what I would like is again, to get, to continue with gaining some upper body strength. Hopefully, and again, my right arm's still not very far along.
Because Zach, they said, or your father told me that they said at the beginning, you never move either arm. Well, you're doing that.
Right.
I mean, you're moving an arm.
Absolutely. And that's, and you know, that came out of nowhere. One day I was sitting there and I flexed my bicep and which basically non-existent now, um, but the, uh, we were at Shepherd, I flexed it and I looked at it. I could feel it, which was the first time. Um, and then OT's noticed it as well. So we started doing more work on that. Um, and again, it's actually kind of gone down now. I've got a little bit of wrist motion. So my, ultimately I would love, and I'm actually have a Zoom tomorrow with a, uh, a group down in my, it's the Miami project, which they actually had a Citadel. It was Benekandi.
Yeah. Nick Bonikandi's son.
Son from the Citadel, actually. He, he is a quadriplegic. And so they've actually been doing a lot of work down at the Miami project. And they're doing a clinical trial right now that would help with upper body, gain upper body functionality. And so that would be, there's a lot of things going on, obviously. Um, you know, it's kind of hoping and seeing what happens. But, um, I would love to gain some hand strength because it is tough. Again, us having to ask everybody for, to, uh, hey, I need a drink. And then, which again, I've got this.
Do what you gotta do there. I mean, people understand if you need to take a swallow out of that.
And I'm, I'm good right now, but that is, it's just frustrating to have to say, hey, can I get a sip of that? Hey, can you feed me? And so, and which my kind of short-term goal right now is to be able to feed myself. The OTs, uh, about back in August, before I kind of had that little spell of in and out of the hospital, they, uh, my OTs kind of thought that I'd probably be able to feed myself by the end of the year, which a year ago or really back while I was at Shepherd kind of just seemed out of the question, but now it's getting closer and closer. And that's something that we've been working on. Um, at, at, uh, or excuse me, at the outpatient rehab that I'm going to currently. Uh, and so that would be my short-term goal, but long-term I'd love to gain, gain the upper body movement, gain some hand functionality. And ultimately I'd love to see some, uh, some of these studies come to fruition. I'd love to walk before it's all said and done.
There you go.
But you know, that's, that is whatever's in God's plan. It's not mine, but we'll, uh, we'll see as we go.
Tomorrow's better than today and the next day is better than, than that day. Uh, let's go down this road because ultimately I want to get to it, to something you want to talk a lot about and, and something that you asked me to come advise you on. And I was flattered when you asked me to do that. But I mean, obviously your fiscal condition is different. Mentally, you're as good as you've ever been. Probably stronger than you've ever been, having to deal with this big old change in, uh, in lifestyle. So, so what does, I mean, whether you walk or not, whether you feed yourself or not, I mean, you're trying your best to, to advance in that regard. But, but when you called me, you asked me what, what I thought about, I'm a former politician. Politician, political wannabes called former politicians and, and, but, but, and I, and I don't think you'll mind me saying this. But when I got there, Zach was talking about, what do you think of this? And what do you think of that? And when I left his house, I said, he's made his mind up. I mean, I can see the look in his eyes. His father comes from the world of public service. You kind of want to be involved in public service. What, what stirred that thought? What, what led you to think now might be the right time? Cause I think when I met with you, I said, hey, let, let, make sure you're on the right track to get better. Make sure you're doing everything you can to feed yourself. Once again, um, and you convinced me, I'm not going to let this get in the way of that. But, but you want to be involved in politics.
Absolutely. And that's something, uh, I mean, you know, I worked with Senator Graham, uh, probably about four or five years ago. Uh, and I've always been intrigued by it. I was down at the Charleston Metro Chamber. Um, and really liked kind of the advocacy side when I was down in Charleston, kind of gain, and I was a political science major, but I think I was really went to Senator to play baseball, not to play school. But, um, we, uh, ultimately whenever I got to Senator Graham's office, I really started to get intrigued and kind of more involved with, with the political side and, um, kind of again, paying a lot more attention than I probably had when I was in college. Um, and so that ultimately, I enjoyed it. I loved seeing the policy come through. I loved kind of working on it and just getting to kind of, I guess, ultimately see how it affects the day-to-day life. Uh, and so that really got my, got me intrigued by it. And then working on the campaign wall while I was there, that I enjoyed the campaign life. But it was just kind of a learning experience. And then at that time, I think you and I actually went to lunch back then one day. And I told you, you know, I'm hoping to, uh, in the future, again, I don't know how long and how distant future it is.
This was prior to the injury.
Oh, absolutely.
This was something you wanted to do before this injury took place.
Yes, sir. And that's, and again, I think that this, the injury kind of probably expedited the timeline because I've got a lot more time on my hands. Um, and I, I'm still working over in Marion County, doing their economic development. But I, I'm not doing it full-time currently and I'm all, I'm working from home. Um, and they've been a blessing throughout this whole injury. But I, I thought, you know, it's, there's a seat coming open. To my knowledge, it's never been won by a Republican. Uh, I thought, you know, that's a hefty goal, but you know, let's see what we can do. You know, I love Florence. Heck, I remember being in the baseball locker room at Citadel. Everybody would go back and forth about where you're from, especially the folks in South Carolina, uh, or that are from South Carolina. And there was a ton of Greenville people. So it's always Greenville versus Florence. And I had a few Sumter guys that we kind of claimed just because we were all the smaller areas. Uh, but so that, the love for Florence kind of really grew there because you had to fight for it all the time. But, um, once the seat came open, again, with having the time on my hands, knowing I need to set goals, uh, it seemed like a great opportunity, something to put my mind to. And as you mentioned, the one. it seemed like a great opportunity, something to put my mind to. And as you mentioned, the one kind of key concern from my family, Lex, everybody was, you know, don't let it get in the way of your rehab. And so we've been very diligent about making sure that we are still spending every bit of time that we do have, or that we would, on rehabbing and trying to be outgoing. And again, we haven't really kicked it up, because the, the election's not until April 1st. There's not a primary opponent. So we haven't gone all in yet, but we are still, again, making sure that we do have the time for rehabbing and making sure we manage our time properly, because that is the most important. At the end of the day, I want to, I want to serve Florence. I want to give back to the community that stood behind me throughout all this. But it is, at the end of the day, I still have to worry about myself. Still have to worry about my health, most importantly.
And, and the thing that you convinced me of is I'm not running to be a novelty candidate. I'm not asking for a sympathy vote. I want to study the issues, understand the issues. I want to be treated just like anybody else serving on council. So as you've studied the issues, have you tried to make yourself a better candidate? What, what are the things that concern you? What are the things you want to make as part of your campaign?
So, and really I'm focusing around four key details or priorities and critical infrastructure being number one. As we're growing, as we see some of these big projects that are coming from the county level, and Greg and their team over at Florence County Economic Development, they've done some great things. But from the county and the, from the city side, really we need to be working with the county, because that's an opportunity. Whenever you see 2,000 jobs coming in, obviously it's going to take its wear and tear on the infrastructure, which we already have issues with. I mean, I'd be remiss to think that anybody hasn't heard about our water issues around here. And so my thing is we've got to work together. We've got to find a way to work with them, because ultimately we can really prosper if we can find ways to develop housing, develop, which, and I guess let me go back. My four priorities are critical infrastructure, housing, economic development, and then crime. And again, I think all of those four kind of go hand in hand, because if we address the infrastructure needs, then we can start to build houses. We can bring in folks that are going to be coming forward to fill these jobs, add to our tax base, that we can provide more and more to our, to our citizens. And then economic development, again, doing what we can from our standpoint, from the city's standpoint. Yeah, we don't, the city doesn't have as much tools as the county does when it comes to economic development. But again, we, we've got to be able to work with the, with the county and find a way forward. Again, if they're, going back to these projects, these huge projects that are coming, that's a huge need for housing. 2,000 jobs, that's 2,000 families. If we can find a way to bring them to the city, that's the, our small business owners are going to be able to, to benefit off of it. Again, we'll, we'll see more businesses, more restaurants downtown. Ultimately, just bringing folks in and being able to retain them. And then again, from a, just a standpoint, there we look downtown, we, we've grown from a, really a manufacturing town. And now we even have white collar jobs here, which again, should attract these young working folks. And if any way that we can to retain them, we've got to work with the county, work with the city, find a way to use these funds so that we can keep growing. And if we do all this, it all comes together and should cut down on our crime, cut down on, on the criminal activity, because we do have a, a need to stop it. We, if, you know, downtown's growth over the last decade has been amazing. I mean, it's, you look at Dargan Street, when I was growing up, you stayed away. Now it's where everybody wants to be. And the problem is if we've, we're one big crime, murder or rape, something downtown, I mean, pray to God we don't ever see it, but that could be detrimental to our growth. All we need, or the last thing we need, I should say, is one of these business owners to leave and vacate. And then we've got more buildings that have to be, that we've got to find a way to do it, or find a way to fill. So that's kind of my priority, is focusing downtown first, let it, let it grow, and then kind of grow from the inside out. But again, we can't do so without addressing those other needs, bringing people in, having a place for them to, to live, and ultimately addressing that infrastructure need.
And you filed to run as a Republican. Why is Zach McKay a Republican?
You know, and I'll be honest with you, Ken. I'm a firm believer that there shouldn't be parties when it comes to municipal elections. I think you should go based off policy alone. But again, that's neither here nor there. Ultimately, I'm anti-tax. That, that is ultimately my, really.
That's a popular stance amongst the public.
It is, it is. But you know, that's ultimately what brought me to the Republican Party. But you know, I agree with, and I don't want to get too deep into it, but just the ideals of the Republican Party have kind of always been me. And again, or what I agree with. And the most, I guess, besides taxes, kind of that most important issue for me is the government, I don't, I want as little bit of government's hands-on as possible. I think the government's there to assist the people, but not intervene in their day-to-day. And so that's kind of where, when it comes again, to spending those tax dollars, utilizing them in ways that will benefit everybody. If it's infrastructure, let's address the infrastructure needs. I'm no water guru, but I think we should go take a deep look into our water issues. Let's take a look, see what happens. And again, and I know that's straying from your original question, but just finding a way to utilize the tax dollars that we do have, rather than new taxes. I think we're taxed enough, taxed to death. And I think that there are creative ways that we can, again, work with the county to find a way to use those tax dollars that we already are receiving to go towards certain goods, certain, again, infrastructure.
What, what did you learn about politics working for Senator Graham? Because Lindsey has kind of, you know this, I mean, you and I've talked about it. Lindsey has kind of a love-hate relationship with the Republican voters of South Carolina. They love him for a day or two, and then they hate him for a day or two, and then they love him again. But what did you learn? What did you take away having worked for Senator Graham?
Well, you know, and like you said, the Republican Party kind of has a love-hate with Senator Graham. And the one thing I will say about it is, first off, he was a great boss, great to work for. But I'll tell you this, that I did really admire is that, you know, Senator Graham's willing to work both sides of the aisle to get what he believes, what he believes done for the American people. And you know, sometimes I might not agree with him. Sometimes we all might not agree with him. But at the end of the day, he knows what it, what it takes to work with the other side, and sometimes work with our side, whichever it is. But that to me was just a belief in, of Senator Graham's that I really took with me. Because again, I think partisan, and in today's world, especially at the federal level, it's very partisan. I mean, which the Republican Party's had a tough time competing with, because they kind of have been able to go across the aisle, which is again, why I think the senator takes so much heat. But in my opinion, you know, that is a, if it's for the good or what they believe, and again, I could be completely wrong on it, but we, we might not agree. But if it's for what Senator Graham thinks is for the best for the American people, you know, I can't fault him. And I think that that is really an amazing feat, especially in today's world of politics, where you can cross that line, take, take the heat that's going to come with it. But again, voting with what you feel is right. And so that was one thing that I really admired about Senator Graham. And you know, I don't know, knock on wood, how this election goes. Don't know what the future holds, but I, I hope that's something that I can kind of hold on to.
Okay, let's, you're, you're an inspiration. You, you know that. I mean, you're not oblivious to that. You're a smart guy. You know that there was this sort of life that you thought you were going to lead, that God throws you a big old curveball, and I don't have a clue why, and you don't have a clue why, and we drive ourselves crazy and make ourselves miserable trying to figure it out. But, but, but you've inspired a lot of people. You've been an inspiration. I keep up with it on Facebook and through your father and whatnot. And you want to be an elected official in, in the city of Florence. If someone wants to know more about you, maybe not your story. That's why I think your story's important, because it led you, a lot of people get in Zach's condition and whoa, whoa, pitiful me, and they find the easy way out. And, and I think it takes a lot of courage to, to not take the easy way out. And I applaud this young man for doing what he's doing, whether he wins or loses. He's deciding to step into the arena. And we know there was a former president who said very great words about stepping in, into the arena. The election's in April. You, you don't have a primary opponent. That scares the daylights out of Republicans in nowadays, primary. You don't want to get primaried if you're a Republican. Cheeto Jesus gets involved in that. It gets real funky if you aren't careful. But, but if somebody out there in the voting public wants to know more about your stances and your agenda and your platform, and why you believe what you believe, is there a website? Is there a phone number? Is there an email? And how can they find out more?
Absolutely. All of the above. We actually just got our website live last night. It's McKayforFlorence.com. And that's McKay, the word for F O R, Florence.com. And then we do have a Facebook page that's McKay for Florence. And again, if you guys have any questions, somebody wants to reach out to me personally, I'm there. I believe in full transparency. My phone number is 843-992-8896. Feel free to give me a call. I will say sometimes it's not on me, so leave me a voicemail and I will get back with you. And then also, again, bear with me, my spasm, I'm not going to get up and run away, but sometimes I'll get these spasms. But, and then my email address is ZMcKay, that's Z M C K A Y at citadel.edu. Still using my Citadel email, but feel free to shoot me an email, ask me questions. Again, check out my website. Look at the policies. And again, anything that I could do to help, please let me know.
Man, from where you were to where you are, I mean, God, God's hard at work in your life and you know that.
Absolutely. And you know, I can't thank the man upstairs enough. He's done a lot for me. Again, I, you know, I, I believe, truly believe that I could have died that night on that hill. And I believe he had plans for me. I think that's why I didn't, you know. And again, I don't want to harp too much on the injury. But the one thing I forgot to mention was the, right when we got to Shepherd, we had the family meeting. Dad, dad hadn't made it, or he had, wasn't there yet at Shepherd. He was probably back here working. But it was me, my mom, my sister and Lex that sat in that meeting. And they pulled up the x-ray, pulled up the MRIs. And, and the doctor, again, at Shepherd, works with a lot of folks. He said, son, he's like, you see this right here? Pulled up again, added on the wall and said, you know, if I was at a seminar, if I was at a conference and we put this on the screen, he said, and they asked, what we believe the most likely result was, he said, I'd say you're dead. He said, there's no way with this type of injuries. I, this, and he put it that way. He said, it was one of the worst that he'd seen. And he said, I honestly would have guessed that you died, that there was no way to come back from it. And then, then we hit on how it only took one surgery to come back. So it's just a lot of domino effect that you know that, that God was involved. And to me, again, that shows that he obviously had bigger plans for me. And obviously it's hard to see at times, especially when you're in the hospital looking at it.
Zach, he has big plans for all of us.
Absolutely.
Most of us are afraid. We run from it. I mean, I've often, my mom was a Proverbs lady, and my mom's told me before, you know, when we get to heaven, the only negativity in heaven will be all the blessings God had for you had you chosen to step out.
Right.
You know, and, and, and live to the fullest of your ability. And I applaud you, and I mean this sincerely. I hate like hell what happened. I do. I hate with all my heart. But you're going to be fine. And I know you are. Whether you win this election or not, you have a bright future. There are a lot of living left for you to do. And you're going, you're going to glorify God and you're going to change whoever you come in touch with and wherever you call home.
You know, I appreciate that. And that's one thing that I think it's been a blessing to see. Because again, prior to it, I wouldn't be the one to, to lead somebody to the Lord. That's, to me, again, I was a believer. I was, but more so a silent believer, if you will. And now it's just the amount of people that have come and talked with me and said, you know, Zach, you are an inspirer. And I don't think I'm an inspiration. You know, it could happen to anybody. And there's lots of people out there that have it a lot worse than me. But that is the one thing that really makes you feel good, is when somebody comes up and says, you know, Zach, your story, how you've been able to keep your faith through this, it's, it's been something that's great to see. And you know, if I lead one person to the Lord, and then to me, that's a job well done. That's quite frankly, probably more than I did prior to the injury. So that's, you know, a blessing of its own.
We'll leave it there. And I want to apologize for that dust I had in my eye. I guess that's a little bit of, some dust floating around in here that got, that got in my eye. Thank you for finding us. Appreciate you subscribing, liking, viewing. And thanks to our sponsors. And I want to list them one last time before we go off the air. Victor's Marlboro, Pity Electric, Co-op, Francis Marion University, Carolina Bank, Pepsi of Florence, Mickey Finn's, McCall Farms, PLC Commercial Real Estate, and the Florence County Legislative Delegation.